January 1st, there would be no clerk.
Yeah, I mean, what do you --
Until --
That's pretty clear. I mean, you know, I guess if it's done, it's done. You just have to have the county clerk in that fourth year or first year of the new term be the person operating the organizational meeting, I guess. I don't know how long you would --
And that would be, you know, then that, you know, if that absence clause would kick in and say, okay, there is no clerk, but you would for theoretically, or up to at least a week, have a vacancy in the clerk of the legislature. Which there are specific duties, powers and duties as designated by state law, responsibilities of clerk, and, you know, whether, that would be a whole other discussion of whether you want the possibility of there being a vacancy in the clerk of the legislature for that long. Yes?
Continue down the path that we're going. What if every legislator is voted out of office that year? Who's going to set up the agenda and everything and make sure that everything's in order for them to --
Yeah, there's a very good chance of that.
Yeah. We can be back to square one and --
Well, the clerk would operate in their functions until December 31st at midnight, and if the organizational meeting takes place that on January 1st, the agenda, the notice has to be served at least five days prior, so it would be the duty of that clerk to do that. And if the clerk fails to deliver that notice, there's the absence clause mandating that the county clerk does that. Now, you know, we can, we can of course assume worst case scenario, you know, none of it, nobody does their job, but, you know, I think we've got to kind of go shoot down the middle where there is at least some sort of backup clause, but, you know, sometimes things just don't work out the way you think they're going.
Yeah, that's probably equally true that if we all lose our jobs, we're not going to care of us.
Yeah.
Even if we all leave, the county executive's here for four years, so that's still --
You want the county executive calling me?
Looks like we just set where we're at.
There's department heads that we all represent, so I think the county's going to do the --
The organizational meeting, actually, in the charter and saying what, what, what business is to conduct it, I think that takes care of the, you know, setting the agenda and stuff. It's just --
Yeah, I mean, you really don't need to. Same way as we, we do not, you know, we establish our regular meetings by our rules, and those are, everybody's aware, it's a standing rule. If it changes, then that's subject to different notification requirements, but our regular meetings are, are not that, treated that way. So, you know, if the organizational meeting section of the charter specifically states, you know, the organizational meeting is, is, has to be, take place within the first seven days upon five days' notice, and these are the things that need to be done, you don't really need, you know, somebody needs to deliver the notice, that's it. And we have the backup of the county clerk doing that. So, let me take a consensus and see if I'm on this, we're all on the same page kind of now. Clerk to be coterminous, auditor to serve at the pleasure of. Okay.
Only I would say about the auditor is that I would think the term of an auditor would be coterminous, but I would think the auditor is susceptible to the budget every year, whether that position is funded or not. So, I just wouldn't want to saddle a new board with an auditor if they wanted to have a committee.
Well, and --
And I guess they could, through what your language, do away with that, but --
Because it is, you know, the, while --
I guess it's good to carry, yeah, I think it's --
Somebody's, somebody's definitely think that defunding a position means eliminating the position, but they truly are two different things. And if a new legislature were to take office and say, we do not want this auditor, while they could not do it at the organizational meeting, if we move forward with specifically designating what can be conducted there, they could call a special meeting, you know, within, within a week and eliminate the position of county auditor. And that's, that's specifically in the powers and duties of the legislature to, you know, create and abolish any positions. So, you, you know, if a legislature came in and there was a sitting auditor, that legislature could eliminate the position through a simple resolution. So, coterminous and pleasure of, is that kind of, we, is that what everybody's mostly comfortable with?
Yes.
All right. So, moving on to Article 3, there were no structural changes to Article 3. Any questions not concerning powers or duties of the executive branch? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article 4 on financial control. The, one thing, a couple of things, just so everybody's on the same page. We, this is the section dealing with budget preparation and everything of the like, and we're going to be talking about this a lot more during the local ID discussions, because most of the duties under financial control deal with elected officials. So, they're going to be subject to referendum on petition, including how the legislature handles the budget and, and so on. The only change made to this in this draft that would not change a power duty is having the requirement of publication notices sent out for the two legislative public hearings. Right now, the charter does not require that those are, that there's specific publication requirements. This goes forward in doing that in Section 403. I'll tell you the exact section and page in a second. 403C, 3 and 4 on Page 13.
Yep, exactly.
Just that the clerk shall cause to be posted on the county website, published in the official newspaper of the county and other such newspapers that may be designated by the legislature, notices of the location and time at which this hearing shall be held no later than five days before said hearing. So, just making that very clear and saying, you know, this is a very serious topic and we should, you know, have this posted specifically. So, that was the only structural change in this draft, but I expect we'll be discussing Article 4 more during local ID discussions. Any discussion, comments, concerns with Article 4? Hearing none. I'm going to combine Article 5 and 6 together. No structural changes. I am currently looking at a couple of things with District Attorney. That will probably, the language will be changed because that is treated as, as a judicial officer, so it falls, that falls at the state level in salary setting, so, you know, I want to make very sure that that's, that's clear in there. So, that, that language will be in the new, the new red line, the red line of this draft that will be coming out shortly after this meeting. Also, just something to keep, or, no, that will be discussed under local ID as far as county. Now, getting into the department provisions. Again, the, all of the departments were reformatted to, to have a congruent format, so it's very logical in the way it's set up. The first section of each article establishes the department and the administrative head of that department, and the second section establishes the powers and duties, and then there's, with some departments, successive sections on different boards and, and so on, other provisions. But all department administrative heads were made to be, have the same qualifications in the charter, meaning no educational requirements are designated to any specific department heads, no provisions on holding other office, full-time, part-time work status, or outside work. And this is something we've discussed with various positions, because right now, our charter says certain positions can do this, can't do that, and it doesn't treat it as blanket policy. All that being said, there are certain qualifications set by state law, there are certain qualifications set by our personnel policies, there are certain qualifications set by our personnel officer that would come in after the fact, but it doesn't establish it in the charter where you have to amend the charter to change that. Yes, legislator Wheeler?
Thank you. I'm just looking at the Department of Economic Development and Planning.
Yes.
I know that we have discussed economic development and the planning departments. This has them still united.
Yes.
If at some point, is that how you want them to stay together? I mean, clearly, they have to, they're stronger together, but by having more of a planning or, it will help the economic development down the line.
Well, you know, I, I think this is the time, you know, that in this charter, in addition to, you know, we're, we're taking a very proactive look at it, I think, and I think is a good thing to, you know, while we're adding the Department of Data Processing, we're bringing it from 1970 to 2010 and calling it the Department of Information Services in this draft. And additionally, with personnel, this county right now does not have a Department of Human Resources. And, and where can you go and find somebody that doesn't have a human resources department? So, the possibility of renaming that the Department of Human Resources to cover all of the, basically all of the tasks that they're currently conducting. There are no changes in powers and duties of this office, but making the name more, make it align with the actual duties of that office and, and what's, what's appropriate. So, as far as economic development and planning, I mean, I think you all know that I am, you know, a big proponent of planning, but we are, you know, looking at this, I think, what legislator Wheeler said of having a combined department is, definitely has its benefits, because you have a consolidation, you have a bigger team to work with, more minds working at it. But I have my own thoughts on naming of that department, but it's not really, not really structural in its sense, just purely like renaming, the possibility of renaming human resources to, or personnel to human resources and data processing to information services would make it more congruent with the purposes of that department, but, best legislator Wheeler?
Well, that was a big sigh. So, what you're saying is the department heads would, their qualifications would be based on what human resources sets?
Human resources, state law, so there are certain positions that are real property tax services. That's strictly regulated by the state, you know, there's a number. But yes, it would be set by the, our internal human resources department, because it really --
Well, is there any options for us? Say, for example, the commissioner of public works, we would like to have a permit of a, of a professional engineer. Now, if it isn't in the human resources qualification, how could we put that in?
So, well, a couple of things that I'll point out, because dealing with that and having a professional license, like our county attorney, our county attorney and public defender, it specifically states that they'd be licensed to practice law in the state of New York. So, if we were dealing with, when was it, in the 60s? Tom, you were a supervisor then, right?
What's that?
When we created the Department of Public Works and the commissioner of Public Works in the 60s or 70s --
No. Roy was.
That --
Roy's father.
Yes, yes. That superseded county law, having a county engineer.
Right.
And having a commissioner of public works no longer needed to be licensed. However, since that, I would, you know, I would pull, set, treat that as a different animal, because it's a professional licensure that could be specifically designated. That's something that's very specific in its sense, that, you know, obviously, county engineer, town engineer, city engineer needs to have a professional license to practice. And there's, you know, the liability that comes, they're assuming the liability that comes along with that.
But theory --
So, that, I think, could be assigned, I think that would be inappropriate to assign in a charter, where saying, like, right now, it's, there's two positions that it says they require a bachelor's degree. That's, because you can become a PE without a bachelor's degree. You, you know, there's just different requirements for licensure. So, you know, I think the licensure thing, being a professional, having a professional license and an educational requirement, well, I would not support educational requirements in the charter, because that's something that I think is specifically human resources.
Exactly.
I think a professional license is different than an educational background. So, to answer your question very shortly, yes.
But you could, all right, well, you could simply pass a resolution to have it put in?
In the charter?
No, no.
Oh.
No, in the human resources qualification. Or would you have to change the charter?
Well, no, you were -- What's that?
Conduct civil service.
Well, I would need --
Did you ask me? It depends on the different position. A lot of times, under county law, there are specific requirements that a department head would have to meet. Under the Department of Public Works, for example, I would say that under, if you're looking under 1702B, where it says have all the powers and perform all the duties now or hereafter conferred, or imposed upon a county engineer or county superintendent of highways by county law, by highway law, I would say, I would want to pull up the highway law to make sure, but that seems to infer that you would have to have a license there, which, so that would be a requirement, to answer your question, under specific county or state law.
So, it could be put in, it could definitely be put in in a personnel description, and while it would be subject to civil service approval at the state level, it's the legislature's power and duty and responsibility to create and abolish positions and set the salaries thereof. So, if the legislature wanted to create a position or alter that position to require professional licensure, that I would say is completely within the powers and duties of the legislature.
Okay.
To set that.
So, we got a little flexibility in there.
Yeah. Now, if it was written in the charter, you, the only way to change it would be by local law. Now, it wouldn't, it wouldn't interfere with elected officers, so it would be a local law, but still, you'd have to go through the process of amending the charter, if it was written in there. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, those are the general requirements. Legislator Wheeler or anybody else was just looking at the first three departments, Board of Elections, Economic Development, and Emergency Management. Any questions, concerns with those departments? They're pretty much, you know, what's, what's on the books, they're straightforward in that there's a department of, that those departments are established, there's a department head, and they have all the powers and duties conferred upon those departments. Any thoughts on any of those? Economic Development, the powers and duties are, you know, from our existing charter with taking out any duplication, but they're, they're all the same powers and duties that are currently existing.
Other elected officials?
Yes.
I'm a little biased here, I guess. County corners?
Yes.
Has anyone, anyone, now that we've changed our legislative districts, given any thought to the elected districts of the corners? Have you ever taken a look at what they are?
They're, I mean --
City of Amsterdam, the Town of Amsterdam, and the Town of Florida. Both do a great job, of course, one is my wife. But geographically, I think it was broken up before, maybe because of, maybe because of bodies, of, of living bodies, but --
Population.
Population.
Yeah.
But if you look at, if you look at the district, it doesn't make sense.
Well, let me, let me just give you this to, for thought, because we'll, we'll talk about this next week, but the legislature can, you know, establish those districts. And further, if the legislature wanted to, by, you know, local law, subject to referendum requirements, you, the legis, or the, a county can choose to go with an appointed medical examiner instead. Those are your options, but, you know, changing the districts of those --
Well, I was looking at, we have nine districts.
Yeah.
And we're still referring to this as city and town in here.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it just be, this election district is made up of legislative districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and the other one is made up of, I was looking more at the wording, and, and you know, how it was --
So, you want to reapportion them?
Well, if it's not reapportioned, at least call it by district, because that's what we are now. We're no longer the town, the town and the city. And that's what it's looking, that's what it's referring to here, is the City of Amsterdam and the Town of Florida, the Town of Amsterdam. Just, what are the districts, if you want to keep the proportion at the same, just --
Fifty-fifty, yeah.
They'll probably have more of an eye toward geography rather than --
It should be towards geography, but it isn't. Right now, if you look at it, it's not.
Definitely some good thoughts, but it would be subject to permissive referendum, so, everybody think about that and come back next week, ready to discuss.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
We have our homework.
Tom, you'd be prepared to know the amount of Democrats who Republican voted in. I'm not committed for reportionment. Okay, so, moving on, Health and Human Services, the Department of Health and Human Services. Last week, we discussed this to some degree, to some length, and the overall sense was we want to see some numbers here that really, you know, are apparent, that make this an apparent, very decisive, good move in, in efficiency. So, I, I think that, that message was received well by the executive, and I hope to, hope to hear more from him on that. I just want to add --
Ryan, if I can just interrupt real quick, when, I mean, I'm glad that Duke brought this up, because this is where I was thinking, and shall they be directly responsible to and serve at the pleasure of the county executive? This is one of those examples that --
Keep reading.
They, well, yes, and they do. The commissioner of the Health and Human Services is appointed for a fixed term of years.
Yes.
But I think the language is contradicting, so everything that Duke had said, this is one of those that we take out.
So, this, this position is, well, this position would be subject to state mandated terms.
Right.
However, the way this is written, as well as a handful of other positions, is that they serve, they're responsible to and serve at the pleasure of the county executive, except, and by putting in the word "except" there, that if the, if the commissioner is appointed for a fixed term of years pursuant to state law, they may only be removed for cause after written notice of charges and an opportunity to be heard. So, basically, what that's saying is, it's, right now, if the state decides that there are no fixed terms, there is no fixed term for any of that position. However, there is, we're all aware that there is. But we're not duplicating that establishment in here, so if that state law was ever changed, this charter would not have to be changed. So, you're, by putting in that "except," you're saying, you know, if, if we're required to, if that position's required to have a fixed term by state law, that takes effect and that supersedes directly that they shall serve at the pleasure of.
Okay. With that being said, part of my questioning of renaming another position is, I think that it puts into risk some of the safety of the term.
Absolutely not.
And the reason being is the term is only the security of the job task.
So --
And the job task of the name change isn't, doesn't --
Well, let me just jump to that department, because it will be easier to handle, since it's not a consolidated department, and we'll jump back to Health and Human Services. So, if we jump to Human Resources, Article 11, the Department of Human Resources is established under the direction of the Commissioner of Human Resources, who has all the powers and duties of a personnel officer. Now, after discussing it, just to make it very clear, that I think the addition of language in here, similar to some other sections, specifically saying the Commissioner of Human Resources shall be the personnel officer, that therefore engages, as we were discussing with the public works position, that engages the state law that regards personnel officers, which establishes a six-year term. So, by changing the name, it's just, right now, our personnel officer, by our charter, is named the Director of Personnel. Who is, our Director of Personnel is our personnel officer and is subject to that fixed term of years. However, they're named by something different. Now, changing that name to Commissioner of Human Resources, if we decide to do so, they're still going to have, as you put, the, the surety of that fixed term of years pursuant to state law, because this has that same language that says, except that if the commissioner is appointed subject, or for a fixed term of years pursuant to state law, so on.
Yeah, I think, I mean, definitely, I think this is one of the topics where it's getting into the minutia of the positions in the department, and I think that the Health and Human Services and the cost analysis that we're going to get back from the auditing is great. And I don't want to get into the human resources too much, only because if we're talking about positions, I don't want it to get like that.
Well, it shouldn't have to, I mean, we're just, it's the general administration.
I do support this, absolutely. But, and one of the questions that I asked, and I did get the answers to, is I worried about the qualifications, because what, were we adding so many more?
Which, which department?
The Health and Human Services.
Okay.
Because it says, the Commissioner of Health and Human Services shall meet the qualifications required by the mental hygiene law, the public health law, the sanitary code, the social services law. And the answer that I've got was not so. So, I didn't think that we were overstepping our bounds, and I know that I spoke with you, so.
And just, you know, if it's any, it's, it's hard to, if it's any reassurance, and it's, that's kind of hard to say with charter law, because every single charter is unique. And the municipal home rule law says, this is what a charter shall do, this is what a charter may do, and this is what a charter shall not do. And those three lists combined are not, there's definitely some areas that, you know, are, are gray and, and fall through the cracks, I should say. But a charter county to our south has a combined human and family, health and family services, where it's combined mental health, public health, social services, and youth bureau under one department. Now, a number of counties have consolidated their public health with mental health, their public health with social services. So, this is something that's been done in a number of cases, and so much so that the State Board of Health has actually issued a memorandum on merged county departments, which I would be happy to send out to you.
Great.
It was, they actually just issued it the past December, so it's a new document. I would add that this article of this charter does comply with everything that the State Board of Health says it has to in order to move forward with a merged department. So, I'll send that out. On Health and Human Services, understanding that we will be getting some sort of financial analysis from the executive at some point, any, any thoughts, concerns on the overall merger of those departments?
I think it's just going to all be predicated on financials.
Okay, very good. History in archives, no changes to. Human resources, change in name, no changes to powers and duties. Any thoughts, concerns?
Like it.
Anytime you move your wrist bar because of your charms, I think you're raising your hand and I get scared. Information services, currently not in our charter. It's chartered at this point and under a different name. Thoughts, concerns, if not?
Like it.
Okay.
I like it.
Now, Department of Law. Now, Department of Law, this article reflects what we discussed and passed with a provisional local law last year addressing some concerns in the existing charter. Now, some, one thing that.